Chair calls a September 3rd, 2019 Stanley County Board of Education meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all of you to our meeting tonight. The Chair would like to recognize Ms. Glenda Gibson for our invocation and pledge. Ms. Gibson?
Let us pray. Dear God, as we come together, we thank you for the many blessings you so richly give to us each day. Bless this journey, all the new school year that we undertake with our students, teachers, staff, and our families. We pray that our schools will provide places of great discovery, adventure, and creativity. May our schools be places where students love to learn and where every student is respected and all are deeply valued. Guide us now with your wisdom and direction in every decision that is made. Amen. Let us stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the Global Leaders Program presentation. Mr. Jeff Little and Ms. Kelly Dombrowski.
A growing number of private and foundation donors have recognized the impact of supporting global professional development for educators across the state. At Stanley County Schools District Teacher of the Year serving for last year, Mr. Jeff Little and Oakboro STEM Principal Kelly Dombrowski were invited to participate in the University of North Carolina Center for Education, excuse me, International Understanding Short-Term Immersion Program. A grant provided by the Hayes Charitable Trust provided the funding for Mr. Little and Mrs. Dombrowski to participate in the Global Leaders Program and travel to Mexico this summer. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Little and Ms. Dombrowski to come forward and tell you about their exciting experience.
It was a wonderful trip, especially for me because I was very hesitant to go. I'd never been out of the country. So it was new to me, the flying and getting to go outside. I was very hesitant, but once I got there, it was a very empowering and very emotional trip for me. A very eye-opening trip. So we went with 42 other teachers and we're gonna keep it short and simple because if we went into the detail we need to, we'd be here hours.
We spent 14 days immersed in Mexico with, as Mr. Little said, 42 other teachers, all from various backgrounds. And so the first thing that they did was send us into Mexico City where we were able to experience both the cultural side of things, but also families and, you know, day-to-day living. Our, as you can see here, we saw everything from Diego Rivera murals, the originals, to the palace. This church here was the Church of the Teacher, which was wonderful to see, and the nuns were, kept a constant vigil of cleaning and keeping it up to date. So it was really a special opportunity to go and see that. Also, we saw the Temple of Mayor, which was a city underneath the city that they had no idea was there. And so, of course, when they discovered it, they really worked very hard and still do to maintain that and keep it up and share for everyone. One of the neatest things that we saw was that every Sunday in the country of Mexico, it is reserved and free for any families to come and spend time at their national registers and historic sites in an effort to encourage families to spend time together. And so we were really taken by that throughout our visit. We also had the opportunity to climb the Temple of the Sun as well as the Temple of the Moon in Teotihuacan, which was an amazing experience because when you look up from the bottom, you think, "I'm never going to make that." But we did slowly but surely, and then traveled down the walkway between the two temples where the Mayans and Aztecs made their way. And as you can see here, we saw some traditional dancers who were, that just made the opportunity that much more rich in the experience.
While there, we were also involved in going into schools and doing some immersion in schools. So we got to see private schools, public schools, trade schools, and universities. And there is, there's a lot of things that are similar, but there's a lot of things that are different there. The private schools, you can see a playground in the pictures. You can see the private school and you're gonna, if you can't see it, you will notice the difference. That's the private school playground. And then right next to it, bottom right, is a public school. Now, I was really impressed with the public schools and how large areas they had there, but it would be a very little grass dirt compared to this. Looks like a professional playing field at the private school. Very little technology. Most of the schools we went into, in the top right-hand corner, you can see they've got some place for a projector, but there's no projector there. They have trouble keeping technology because it'll get stolen. The schools have bars and they're secure gated facilities. We had to be led in to the school that has the tree on the wall. And they were, that school was focused on health, healthy eating habits, brushing teeth. They're trying to do things education-wise, ABCs, 1-2-3s, but they're having to identify that they've got some problems with, like, healthy eating habits, making sure that they're taking care of theirself. We went to some trade schools, and you have to pay to go to their trade schools, but they are sponsored by a lot of corporations that have moved into the area. And that's where you can see you've got GM, Mazda. They tried to do some work there to get students from the public schools into that private sector, into the trade schools. The universities are for the teachers. They have teaching schools. That's usually what their universities revolve around. If you click there. Water crisis. This is where it was very emotional for me. Their water is, it is life or death for them. In Mexico City, there is times in the year that they might not have sections of the city that have water. You can see the barrels, and these rotoplast barrels are on top of almost every home. And they buy water to put in these cisterns to use in their households. The schools, and you can see the hosepipe into the boys' bathroom there, that's how they flush the commodes. They have these barrels of water outside so that they can just flush their commodes. And that was, yeah, in wash hands. The top right, out in the urban or outskirts of Mexico, they tank the water in in trucks. And they have to go to these stations and buy their water. So you'll see people walking in the streets with buckets to go get the water that they need for the day. And if the truck doesn't show up, they don't have water. If they don't have water, they don't have that basic need. Some kids will not be in school the next day because of water. But there was a program, if you'll click. And this is something that I'm working on with our school and hopefully with some of the other schools to partner. It's Al Urbana, and they put in these water systems for rain schools. And our program was responsible for putting in a water system that is pictured here. All these pipes, they put in, they catch water. They're trying to teach reclamation of water resources. It helps multiple points. It helps recycle water. It helps with flooding because they don't have the runoff because it's a highly urbanized area to keep the flooding to a minimum so they're able to reuse the water. The young man you see in the red sweater knew the system in and out. He was explaining the whole system to us. So they're not only going in and putting this system in the school, they have education programs teaching them why it's important to have these systems. But now they're not cheap. Our program, along with VIA International, Al Urbana, and GoGlobal contributed money to that system. And if I remember right, it was about $8,000 for that school. But it's helping them in the long run because they have a long rainy season where they can reclaim water. Again, that's one of the programs I'm trying to work at, getting some collaboration between Stanley County Schools and Al Urbana. It's just taking a little while, but that's what I hope to do. And that's-
This young man was in fifth grade?
Yeah, fifth grade. No, he was third grade. He was third. He was a third grader.
And he began talking about it and asking families to participate and his teachers to participate. And he was so very proud of it when we came. He presented to us his research and why this would be a good thing. And on that day, they had just received it. And so it was very, very much a celebratory event, and we were able to see the benefit of it. He would go out and monitor it. The children would get to go and test it. So it really was a whole community effort. And you could see how much of an improvement it made because they were healthy and well and, you know, bright and able to go to school and focus on the learning as opposed to what they didn't have.
They were invested because it was part of theirs, because they were part of the planet. So it really made a big difference in this community. And this, and Al Urbana does this for residential homes as well as schools. So they're trying to address their water need from within. So it's not just a, you know, sticking their hand out and saying, "Help us fix it." They're trying different ways to fix it from within. They just need some help. That was one thing a parent had told us. She said, "We don't want you here to feel sorry for us, but if you're here to help, we will collaborate." And that was exactly how she said it. So it was a very emotional, empowering trip for me.
And this was very early on in our travels, and so it really brought our attention to everywhere we went. The containment systems on the rooftops, everywhere in the towns that you saw and we could compare to. And it really made us realize that this is not easily gotten where we were. And so we had really had the opportunity to see that and then really put that to purpose as we went on everywhere else as to what might be possible.
Yeah.
But we really appreciate the opportunity and the support to Go and the Hayes Charitable Fund and the support of the school board and Stanley County Schools because it was dynamic, not only to be immersed, but also with 41 other educators, which were just ideas a-flowing constantly, not just about how to bring this home, but what everyone's doing in their school systems and how we can apply it to ours. And it really was a unique collaborative opportunity that we just can't replicate.
Yeah. It's, it was wonderful. Thank you for that opportunity.
Your board members have any questions or comments?
Are you able to partner now, like at your school, are you able to partner with any of these classes or teachers throughout the year?
Yes, there was a lot of conversation about that, but as Mr. Little said, the technology component is a barrier. You know, we often mentioned, "Oh, it would be wonderful to Skype. It would be wonderful to, you know, zoom in." However, much of their classrooms, unless you're at the private schools, much of their classrooms were books and we talk and we discuss and collaborative in nature, but there was an interest, and that's something we would like to pursue.
There was a third-grade teacher that we got to push into her class, and I actually wrote a reflection on it. It was, it was great. It was collaborative learning. The other teachers that were in there with us, they were working on Base 10 lessons and we were helping. And, you know, I couldn't speak Spanish, but I did understand what was going on and I knew numbers well enough, and it was just wonderful. And that teacher, we were trying to talk, we had a translator helping us. And I asked her if there's any way we could communicate, and she said the only way would be her phone because of the technology. And we're gonna try something with that around it. Again, it's the technology barrier.
Or even by mail, is there, like, writing letters, you know, the children writing letters?
It just gets into the, and they, they're learning English in their classes, so it would be a good exercise for them. And that was what she reflected on. She said it would be a good exercise for them with practicing their English.
Practice, right. It's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Glad you enjoyed your plane flight.
Yeah. That was interesting.
He was fun. He was good.
We have some more recognitions tonight, and Dr. James, you're listed here. Got Ms. Calvert doing this.
Thank you, Chairman Poole. I'll ask Ms. Calvert if she would meet me at the podium, but we're gonna recognize our Teacher of the Year and, of course, our retirees. So one of the better parts of the year that we can recognize, the new people that are working with us and, of course, those that have helped for many, many years and are going out. You're non-replaceable, I can assure you. And we've got a generation of people retiring, and if you look at the education system, it will be almost impossible to replace those in the upcoming years. So there's new law on the books, so you can come back after six months and teach in an at-risk-oh, so remember that, and help out in other ways. So don't forget us. We'll need your help. So I'll meet you at the podium.
So Mr. Chair and members of the board, for more than 50 years, our nation has honored teachers with the National Teacher of the Year Program. North Carolina has been honoring Teachers of the Year since 1970. Mr. Jeff Little, East Albemarle Elementary's Teacher of the Year, was selected as Stanley County Schools Teacher of the Year for the 2018-2019 school year. So in addition to being able to travel to Mexico, he's gonna help us also with our presentation this evening. In accordance with the national guidelines, each school staff in Stanley County chooses a candidate who is dedicated and highly skilled, a candidate proven capable of inspiring students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn. At this time, I want to recognize the teachers selected at each of our schools. And as I call your name, if you will, please come forward. From Albemarle High School, Maria Wright. From Aquadale Elementary School, Carolyn Smith. From Baden Elementary School, Nancy Deek. From Central Elementary School, Jennifer Stokes. From East Albemarle Elementary School, Krista McGuire. From Indy Elementary School, Melissa Straining. From Locust Elementary School, Anna Goins. From Millingport Elementary School, Angela Helms. From Norwood Elementary School, Beverly Bowles. From North Stanley High School, Tina Carter. From North Stanley Middle School, Stephanie Cooper. From Oakboro, Oakboro Choy STEM School, Chelsea Williams. From Richfield Elementary School, Michelle Hampton. From Stanley Academy, Sarah Blanton. From Stanley Early College High School, Patricia Whitley. From South Stanley High School, Mike Curley. From South Stanley Middle School, Michelle Henson. From Stanfield Elementary School, Kristen Honeycutt. From West Stanley High School, Dana Burleson. And from West Stanley Middle School, Manny Duarte. So after individuals are chosen to represent their respective school as Teacher of the Year, and by the way, I need to add that that is such an honor. The true honor is all of you that are standing up there. You were selected by your peers, the folks that see you every day, day in and day out, and that is an honor to be celebrated. Each administrator submitted information on each candidate from their school. It was then the difficult task of a committee to select one of these wonderful teachers to be recognized as the teacher to represent Stanley County Schools and vie for one of eight North Carolina Regional Teacher of the Year honors. This evening, our Teacher of the Year will be, for the district, will be receiving a $500 check provided by ESS, our staffing firm that provides our substitutes and our peer professionals. And also, if we are offered the trip again, as Mr. Little was able to attend, our Teacher of the Year will be given that opportunity. So the person selected as the District Teacher of the Year has been described this way. Not enough words can be said. This person works collaboratively and effectively with colleagues in inclusive setting. This person takes an active role in team teaching. This person is exceptional at working to address student needs. As a special teacher, a professional in the building, as a coach in multiple sports. This staff member instills perseverance, school, team, and self-pride in all that is done. This staff member serves as a mentor for beginning teachers, has the confidence of the students, the school, and the community. This staff member shows strong leadership in every dimension. Chairman Poole and members of the board, it is my pleasure to present Stanley County Schools Teacher of the Year, Mr. Mike Curley.
I will be honest, I have the gift of gab, but right now, I'm a little bit speechless. I, today I had a cross-country meet at 4:30 in Albemarle, and I drive a bus and I have 40 runners. And Mr. Parker was like, "You need to be at the board meeting." And I was like, "I don't know how I'm gonna make it happen, but I'll make it happen." So I took a canned bath with deodorant and changed over really quick and got over here. Thank you so much. I'm honored. I look around and I know some of the faces up here, and I'm very honored, and we're all honored to be here. I love, the best decision I made was 10 years ago, and I left Charlotte Meck. And I left Butler High School at the time. I loved Butler, but I knew that I needed to work my way down this way, and it was the best decision I made. I love the South Stanley area. I love Stanley County. I have roots in Stanley County, and I'm tickled to death to be here. It was by far the best decision I ever made. Thank you to everyone, and thank you to my colleagues who voted for me. They're probably floored that I'm here right now, too. So, but thank you, everybody.
Thank you for the unpaid announcement, advertisement there.
is the human mind and spirit. Chairman Poole and members of the board, it's my pleasure tonight to present great artists that have worked collaboratively to provide educational services to the students of Stanley County and have now decided to move on to the next phase of their life. Although everyone is not able to be with us tonight, I will be calling the names of Stanley County Schools employees who have retired during the 2018-2019 school year. As I call your name, please come forward. Robert Blake. Tammy Blaylock. Shirley Barbie. Margaret Burleson. Sandra Burris. Rachel Coleman. Lee Dennis. Joanna Foster. Tracy Gaddy. Pamela Grant. Tammy Griffin. Florence Houston. Aza Hudson. Jane Ellen Honeycutt. Melissa Eisenhower. Susan Lamar. Zandra Lambert. Tanya Lanier. Shelby Lawson. Kimberly Linker. David Lowe. Sharon Lowe. Barbara McManus. Penny Morton. Robin Noah. Tammy Palmer. Sunny Richards. Bruce Rogers. Deborah Schankel. Suzanne Shields. Tina Small. Lori Smith. Virginia Spencer. Gina Stevens. Amy Story. Sally Sumi. Sandra Tucker. Tracy Wall. Cynthia Wells. Wanda Whitehead. Members of the board, these are the individuals whose service has embodied Stanley County Schools core values. To all of you standing before us this evening- To all of you standing before us this evening, thank you for all that you've done for our students. And we wish you the best as you start your new phase of your life.
Okay, the next award is a prestigious award, and this is given on behalf of the NC ASBO, which is the North Carolina Association of School Business Officials International, and actually, it's awarded for the Board and for our Finance Department. But I'm pleased to announce tonight, to inform the Board, that we have received ASBO's Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ending 2018. This award represents a significant achievement and reflects your commitment as a Board to the transparency and high-quality financial reporting that is required of school systems. We encourage you to use the COE recipient logo to share your achievement in emails and marketing materials. The Certificate of Excellence review team has provided their comments for improvement, of course, in your report. But again, this is an excellent reward, an award that I want to congratulate the Finance Department. I know Georgia was part of that, and many other people during the year. I do want to send a shout-out to Meg Bowers, that has stepped in several times as the Assistant Finance Director over a period of the last 18 months. So Meg is an integral part of that. But this award shows our commitment to transparency and finances, and I would just like the public to know we've come a long way from over a year and a half ago when we were in a deficit. So we have put things in place to make sure that we're reporting accurately and transparency exists with our budget. So we did want the public to know that and congratulate the Finance Department. To Georgia, if you'll come forward.
You should have a copy of the August 6 regular meeting minutes in front of you. Are there any corrections or deletions that need to be made to the minutes? Here none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We're running, go ahead with committee reports, instructional program. Mr. Jeff Chance. Thank you, Mr. Chance. Facilities, Mr. McIntyre.
No report, however, you do have a paper in your packet regarding the agreement with the Head Start Program using one of our buildings at Norwood, however, this was handled at our last board meeting.
Finance, Mr. Graves. Thank you, Mr. Graves. Personnel, Mr. Vicky Watts.
Yes, sir. We had a meeting on August the 29th. And Ms. Calvert gave us, provided us with some updates concerning our paraprofessionals staffing with ESS and how we're saving some money there. And they, and the pay increase paraprofessionals could gain by using ESS services. So thus far, has been a very positive relationship. And Dr. James stated about a health benefit package, possibly from the YMCA, that will partner with our employees and board members. And then we also had a motion that we have had that come to the Board about the 10- and 12-month installments, where some of our classified people are being paid before they work. And that is not good practice, according to the auditor. So we need to change that. So that's coming from committee.
What's the actual motion here? To approve?
To move forward with eliminating prepayment for non-certified employees.
Motion from committee then is to eliminate prepaid employment. Everybody understand the motions, everyone understand the motion? Any discussion from anyone? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Okay, the motion stands approved. Thank you, Ms. Watson. Ms. Gibson or Mr. James or Dr. James, do you have anything for the legislative update? Oh, I'm sorry, moving too fast tonight, sorry about that. Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Ms. Crump, would you please, you have quite a bit for us to vote on tonight.
We do, we do, we have about half an inch of a book of policies in the 2000 series. And instead of going through all of these, they've been tabled for 30 days. We're gonna go ahead, we just need a motion to approve all of the policies here in the bundle.
Doesn't matter anyway, let's go ahead and do this first. These were already out. We're not gonna, we're gonna forego reading all these numbers again because Ms. Watson read all of them out last time, so we're just gonna vote on them in book if that's, no one has any objections. Do we have a motion for the approval of the policies?
Move approve.
Got a motion from Mr. Chance and Ryan, Mr. McIntyre vote. All right, second by Mr. McIntyre then. Any discussion? Here none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, you have a list for rescension. Might want to read through these right quick, if you don't mind, just.
Okay, and this will give you an indicator of what that list was, just for anyone here that would like to know what this list of policies was. Basically, we're rescinding these because we have new numbers that will replace them. 1020, school board memberships. 1030, election and organization. 1035, procedure for filling vacancies. 1040, school board authority. 1045, board ethics and responsibilities. 1050, board meetings. 1055, public hearings. 1065, open meetings. 1075, board meeting preparation. 1080, agenda. 1085, rules of order. 1090, board meeting news coverage. 1095, public participation. 1100, disruptions of meetings. 1105, policy development. 1110, suspension of policies. 1115, administrative procedures. 1120, board member orientation. 1125, conferences, conventions, and workshops. 1135, official school spokesperson. 1140, board attorney. 1145, consultants. 1150, business advisory council. 2060, public complaints and concerns. 2065, hearings before the Board.
This is, probably, I probably did the last one wrong because it was coming from a committee, but that's okay, we'll let the motion second stand. This came out of committee, too, and these policies up for rescension. So the motion is to rescind the policies that were just read. We have any discussion? Here none, those in favor of rescinding these signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Crump. Thank you. Okay, Dr. James, update on school data. Oh, and I'm sorry, now we jumped again, thank you. I could feel the error coming from that direction, thank you. Ms. Gibson and Dr. James, Legislative Resource Network.
You know, the only thing, I think I'm going to be asking Dr. James about this, but I think it now has been approved about the retirees that they can come out of retirement. I read where I think they have to work 30, like, hours, or, you know, or more. And it has to be the high-risk schools. So I was glad to see that finally approved. The other thing that I wanted to ask you about, Dr. James, is the I red, the I station. I guess my concern is, teachers are being trained, and from what I'm understanding with I station, but yet, it's still kind of up in the air, if that's taking the place.
Yes, I station was the program the state superintendent elected to go with in an RFP process, that's a legalized bid process that we're required to use as government entities. I station was awarded that, but there's been an injunction by DIT, which is an instructional technology wing of the state. Not sure how they got that accomplished, but there is an injunction to prevent that from moving forward. I station was delayed at the recommendation of 116 superintendents because we were going to try to train everyone before school began in a matter of three to four weeks on I station, which was not best practice. So the superintendents asked for a stay of that until at least mid-year. So EVOs data, which teachers are very concerned about, as we all are, would not begin until mid-year for those grade levels K3 that I station's gonna be deployed in. Right now, the company has agreed to do training free of charge, but that's still not solidified if that's what the state's gonna move forward with. In addition, the governor did not pass the Read to Achieve Act, which is what we were using the past five years. Some controversy surrounding it, there was a research commitment from North Carolina State that looked into the program for several years and did not find there were significant gains using Read to Achieve. So the governor has said there's no reason to continue a program that's not produced positive results for our students. So we're sort of in limbo in K3 world with what we're gonna do. We will proceed to move forward with training on I station. We had currently used a program called I Ready, which is very similar to I station. Actually, I reached out to Senator Berger with some concerns about having multiple programs, that's just not good practice. So right now, I would just can, just say to teachers, continue to do what you know best for reading and best practice. I'm gonna share some preliminary data, what I can, with you tonight. It's not official till tomorrow. But I would tell our teachers looking at the data that I've looked at, don't stop doing what you did last year. You've done a phenomenal job, so let's continue to do what we were doing. And then we'll wait on the state to see what's gonna happen in reading. The rehire, yes, the only thing on rehire, we're cautioned about federal impact of taxes. So with the I's and all, that there are certain guidelines we have to go through. So we are working on that. There are several conferences coming up to talk about the impact of that, but you can be a D school, F school, or a deemed at-risk school and still be able to rehire. Of course, you still have the six-month waiting period, we were hoping that would be waived. The other, the other bill that's lying on the governor's desk is that all state employees, with the exception of those employed by school boards, are up for a 2.5% raise statewide. So we're not in that bill. So I'm betting that that bill will get passed from the governor's desk, and so teachers and school bookkeepers, custodians, principals, assistant principals, superintendent, we don't know where we're at in the mix of things for getting a raise. Right now, there's individual bills being passed to the governor one at a time. So I don't foresee in the near future of having a budget for our educators, and that's sad because to me, the jobs become even more difficult, and I don't know that we could pay an educator enough. But hopefully, we'll have some movement. I would encourage anyone to talk to their legislature about the concerns of getting this budget moved forward for our educators. But that's about it for right now, it's just a wait-and-see game.
We're living in a CR world. Human resolutions. Thank you. You have the update on school data now?
Well, actually, I'm gonna have Tim Hatley pull up the slides, and if he wants to stand there, there's only four of them. But just wanted to bring up some data and talk to the Board and the community as a whole, and I'm sure Chris is still in the room, so he'll get this in the snap. We'll share it with him. But I guess over the past months, in the paper, and actually, one individual from California weighed in on SAT scores. So Tim, if you'll pull the first slide up.
Yes, sir. With the list?
There we go. So, return on investment. I know that business people understand that. So there's 100 districts, or the 115 districts, with 100 counties, and this is done by county. So here's where Stanley County ranks. So we're 54th in the state when it comes to return on your investment. So basically, a fifth grader is at 4.9 years. Yes, we should be five or higher, that's our goal. And I can assure you, after this year's data, that the great work being done out in our schools, we won't be 54th next year, we'll be way up that list. But I just want to point out to you, if you look at the median income, Chapel Hill Carbur, that everyone brags about, the median income, there's 101,000 versus 59 in Stanley. We outperform Chapel Hill Carbur. And if you look through that list, there's a list of all the other schools we outperform. Rowan Salisbury, one of our local districts. So when people take potshots at us and say that we're not performing or doing what's best for kids, here's what you need to keep in mind. There's over 125 pieces of data that we're responsible to report out. And it's sort of like when you take your car in for one of those 125-point inspections. I can assure you, I don't care how new your car is, out of 125 points, they're gonna find something that you need to work on. That's the same way as the school system. And you know there's gonna be other things that are more urgent on that car. If there's a transmission problem, you may need it fixed well before having spark plugs changed. So for the education system, there's always gonna be areas we need to improve. But I think it's unfair for the, for us as an education system, for people just to take one piece of data out of 125 district metrics and to use that as something we're failing at. That's an unfair way to look at us, you have to look at us overall. So next slide, Tim. So if you look at, this is another national trend, this has every county in the United States. So if you look at third graders, 2,000 of the large school districts, and look where Stanley County's at, we're above average. So you're welcome. Thank you all, the schools and all the administrators, what you do. This data can be plotted, if you look at it, it looks at poor districts versus richer districts. We have room for improvement, but you can see that we're doing a great job of return on investment. So anytime you're above the line, you're accomplishing what you tend to do. It'd be nice to be two or three years above that line, but again, we're working toward that. Next slide, Tim. And of course, we were ranked by a national ranking company, we got a B minus. So I will tell you that I will take a B minus any day. That is great, comparison across our nation to be a B minus school. Again, we're shooting for a B or an A, but we're on our way to that. But I just want to throw this data out, and then the last slide, Tim. So here's data that's been collected for over, these graphs don't show the 25 years, but there's been data collected since almost the beginning of time on school systems. And here's one thing I can tell you. So if you tell me what a school's free and reduced lunch percentage is, I can pretty well tell you what their proficiency is gonna be. I don't need anything else. And so what the public, general public, has to understand, poverty is the enemy of education. And so quit taking potshots at us about everything else that's wrong, and let's look at what's really wrong, and that's poverty. So here's the problem. A student that's in poverty enters kindergarten with 5,000 words in their vocabulary versus a student that's not in poverty entering with 30,000 words. Now, you might be, we might have Coach Carter's in a lot of our rooms. But to go from 5,000 to 30,000 vocabulary word increase for any teacher is phenomenal. So you're expecting us to do all the work at schools, it cannot happen. There's not enough hours in the day for us to close the gap that is enhanced, or influenced by poverty. So when kids come out of poverty, they're at a disadvantage already. So we have to find ways to catch them up. One thing North Carolina has done, of course, is pre-K, more forward, started back in the hunt area. And we have continued with NC pre-K. And there's a push to make that universal, I would love for every kid to get pre-K because it definitely will equal, or will level the playground for students that are in poverty. So a lot of the after-school programs we look at are attempts to try to give extra support for students that are already behind. And you gotta remember, when summer slide comes for a student that's in poverty, they don't go to museums and go take trips outside the state. don't go to museums and go take trips outside the state and get to see a lot of things that other kids that are not in poverty see. So every summer that comes is an opportunity for summer slide. So one thing the state is doing is the summer reading camps. So that's been a plus for our system. And just to be honest with you, Ms. Gibson, I can tell the governor and the legislature very easily how to improve reading in K-three, put our teacher assistants back, period. And that's a lot cheaper than the hundred and fifty million dollars we spent on Read to Achieve in the last five years. So they do small group pullouts, small group instruction is how you teach kids to read. They are not copymakers, and they're not coffee makers. They're a teacher. They're a teacher assistant. And most of them know exactly what to do to help get kids to read. So again, it's easy to get back to getting kids to read on grade level, but we'll continue that battle. But I did want to bring this data to the board and just give you an update. I will tell you that next month, we will report out quite a bit of data. We have twenty-one schools, and currently, and Tim won't shoot me for some of this because I'm not going to divulge anything I shouldn't. It is official tomorrow, but seventeen of our twenty-one schools have showed significant, significant gains in performance. I counted up ten of our schools over a hundred percent gain in proficiency, hundred percent. Some schools over two-hundred percent. So yes, we are doing great things for kids here in Stanley County, so those taking potshots need to stop. The other thing I wrote down, we have schools that have exceeded and met growth. All but four schools exceeded or met growth. Now, that may change a little tomorrow, but we're thinking it may be in our favor from what we're reading so far. So I want to commend the teachers and the administration in the system for persevering when people take potshots at you and try to say what we're not doing. You're doing a heck of a lot, and I congratulate every one of you. It's the work you do every day that shows that we're doing what's best for Stanley County students, and you will not find a better education. We have the only A-school in Stanley County with forty-three percent free and reduced lunch, and the diversity that mimics the county. So make sure we get that in the paper, Chris. So just wanted to say that and go on my soapbox. I could speak for another hour, but enough's enough. Let's get about the work of helping our kids and doing what's best for our kids. They are our customer. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Dr. James. Mr. Poplin, you want to follow that?
I was going to say ditto.
Okay.
Better course this time. Thank you, Jim. Amen. I will say amen.
Ms. Coward, you're up at bat.
So I'd like to draw your attention to the updated personnel agenda that was left at your place. Section one requires no action, but section two does require action.
Move the approval to section two.
Motion by Mr. McIntyre to approve section two. Is there a second? Okay, we have any discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed, no. Thank you. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coward. Ms. Harvey, you have anything for us tonight?
No.
Okay. We don't have anybody signed up for public comment. So, Dr. James, we're back to you. You still going?
Okay, I apologize for tonight, but there's another, I need to read this, and I normally wouldn't do this, but I just need to say this. Normally, again, I wouldn't do this, but I think it needs to be said. In a recent SNAP article, I was quoted that, quote, "I should not weigh in on either side of the consolidation debate," quote. Persuasive to this article, there were some responses on Facebook challenging my position. In education, we call this a teachable moment, simply an opportunity to correct misperception on the structure of school systems. First, I want to mention both the board and I take an oath of office to uphold the laws of the land, both the U.S. and North Carolina Constitution. That said, there are very distinct general statutes that lay out the governance of school boards. Simply, the vision, mission, and strategic goals are developed by the board. My job is to enact these plans and report out our success or failures in achieving them. The following general statutes make it clear who sets the direction of the district. The general statutes covering the governance of the board are 115(c)-276, 115(c)-47, 115(c)-36. For me to lead a consolidation or community-based charge without the full approval of the board would mean I violated the law. The community, through voting, also influences the direction of the system. Last election was very clear, community-based schools. I would hope the citizens, as I, and though the board does, want my effort placed in improving the education for our students. That is why we're here, to educate and prepare our students, which in one year, we have made significant strides in many areas, including grants of over six-point-five million dollars, with over nine million grants currently in the works. If consolidation and advanced placement classes would solve all of Stanley County's problems, I fully believe the board would say move forward. Stanley is identical to the over forty other rural counties facing the same issues, lack of funds to maintain our schools. This is a statewide issue, and a study has shown that the state needs over eight million dollars to renovate or replace outdated structures. Yes, I was part of a five-year consolidation plan in Montgomery. It is very detailed, and it is on my shelf, four-hundred-and-seventy-five pages. The county commissioners led the way and understood three entities were in the mix: East Montgomery High School, West Montgomery High School, and Montgomery Community College. During this process, there was a tax increase of eight cent on the hundred and a seventy-million-dollar USDA loan for forty years at two-point-seven-five percent. So simply closing a school saves approximately three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, not much in a seventy-three-million-dollar budget. However, if we close a school, it still must be maintained. We simply can't let it deteriorate. Also, the biggest issue is whose school would you close? No one is asking our customers, which, by the way, are students, and they accept, and when I talk to them, except for me and my staff, we do ask them, and when we talk to them, the students express very little support for consolidation, and they're very school-oriented. So they like their school, and that's where they want to be. They believe and support their schools and feel we have made significant improvements in the educational attainment and choices in our system. The Choice High Schools are a magnet, if you prefer to call them that, were part of student interest and student perception as we go by each quarter and talk to students. As for offering more class types and larger setting, the school size has little impact, but marketing has a huge impact on what classes are offered. Simply, kids must want to take a class before we offer it. The same thing occurs at community colleges and four-year universities. If there's not enough students signed up for a class, you don't have it. So again, if we have enough students, we'll offer a class. And let's think about this. By the end of the day, twenty percent of our students seek a four-year degree. Twenty percent. Eighty percent of the students are left. So most of the twenty percent attend university systems that still give college and career promise classes equal weight as AP. So please, let's put the argument of advanced placement classes to bed. It's ten years old, sort of as SAT is. So again, we're in a different world. We're at different metrics. So should we put all of our effort in the twenty percent, or should we educate all of our students? I think we should educate all of our students. So I'm off my soapbox. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Very good. Okay, Hanson, we're going to start with you tonight. You got anything?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything until Dr. James commented. I just want to say this. I am, I feel for Dr. James because it is very difficult being in his position where he's stuck between Facebook and the school board in trying to perform his job. And as I've said before, I think he's done an outstanding job. Nobody's perfect. No school system is perfect. No school board is perfect, but I'm excited about the direction that Stanley County Schools is going in, and there is no doubt that we are headed in a positive direction, due in large part to him and his staff and all of their efforts in the last year and a half. So I just want to thank him for all the hard work that he's done. I know that we're facing some big challenges in the school system, and I'm glad that he at least will stand up and speak his mind and try to provide people with the information they need to understand the direction that the school system is going in. But this one particular subject about consolidation, it's one of those situations where you're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't. He gave an accurate answer to a question that was posed to him. I'm glad that he elaborated on that. I'm glad that he provided the information and the background and the context that he just did. And I just want to go on record as saying personally, I only speak for myself, that if and when individuals out in the community can come up with not only a consolidation plan or any plan that they think is an alternative to what we're doing in the school system right now, that includes a way to fund it, then I am more than happy to listen to that for as long as they would like to speak. So again, I want to thank Dr. James for commenting on his remarks in the paper. I want to thank everybody in Stanley County Schools I know that worked so hard to make the start of the school year a success. I want to thank all you guys. I want to congratulate the people that received awards tonight. It is an honor, especially when you're picked amongst your peers, to receive an award, and so I want to congratulate them. And I just want to thank everybody for working so hard to accomplish what we did in the last year. So thank you so much, and those are all my remarks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Hunker down for the hurricane.
That's right.
Ms. Crump.
I just want to take some time to congratulate our Teacher of the Year, Mike Curley. I was not one bit surprised when I heard the description of how he had been described by his peers or whomever you had gotten those comments from. I just knew it was Mike Curley. I have a daughter who was coached by him last year in soccer, and it was her best year yet. And it wasn't just because he was such an outstanding coach, which he was. It's because of his mentoring and what he taught her off of the field as well, and in-between class changes and all the times that he would engage with her or the other students around. And so I think that everyone would agree with that. But I looked over at all of the people standing there, and I knew quite a few of them. My children were taught by another of the individuals there, and I was so proud. And so congratulate, I just want to congratulate all of them. Also, to the retirees, that's something very special, and I'm just very appreciative for all of the time and the commitment and the love that they've put into their careers with Stanley County Schools. Ms. Harvey, I just want to congratulate you two as well for the ASBO Certificate of Excellence. I know that that was a joint effort, but that is quite an achievement. So as the head of the Finance Department, thank you very, very much for all your hard work. And I absolutely cannot wait to get the report for tomorrow. We got just a little taste of it the other night. Can I say that? We saw a little bit. We saw a little bit the other night when we were here for a committee meeting, and it is so exciting that I cannot wait for the public to see, especially those who've taken some pop shots. Can't wait. So ditto to everything you just said.
Mr. McIntyre.
Just to echo everything that Mr. Graves and Ms. Crump, Ms. Crump just said. Congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year. Special congrats to Mr. Curley. Thank you to all of our retirees for all that you've put in over the years. Congrats to Ms. Harvey and everyone in the Finance Department on all of your hard work. And thank you to Dr. James for all that you've done, and not even just on the consolidation effort, but I know that you got beat over the head with a hammer quite a bit in the last two weeks, especially considering the first day of school. We had some, I won't use the word hiccups because then I'll get beat over the head, but you know, some pretty bad, you know, mess-ups there. But you've worked very hard. You, Todd, Mike, to rectify that, and it sounds like everything has been going much smoother. And I believe we have, what, three open positions for bus drivers now? Three or... Yeah, so thank God that's not twenty-four. And I'll just leave it at that.
Ms. Gibson, you'll drop down to your end and come back.
Well, I echo everything as well that has been said. Certainly, I really enjoyed the presentation from Mr. Jeff Little and Ms. Donbrowski. I think it'd be interesting to even hear more, see more of what all they were a part of, but that's, that was amazing to me. Congratulations to our Teachers of the Year, our new Teacher of the Year with Mr. Curley. Certainly, congratulations retirees. It's something you work hard toward, and so it's a special time when you're able to retire, and then you do other things. It's not like you just forget education. Sometimes you just go in a different direction of using your education. So congratulations to them. And Ms. Harvey, thank you very much for all that you do. Certainly, congratulations to all of our teachers and our students on their excellent achievements from last year. Ms. Crump has me excited about, you know, seeing and hearing more, but that's wonderful. And thank you to all of our central office staff and our administrators that are here and that you're always here. I appreciate what you do, and I appreciate you very much. Thank you, Dr. James, for what you had to just say.
Mr. Chance.
Well, with Ms. Watson and I batting cleanup tonight, it's difficult to say anything new that hadn't already been said, with the exception of, obviously, we do want to congratulate all those who have been recognized tonight. Mr. Curley, our new Teacher of the Year, Mr. Little, our previous Teacher of the Year, Ms. Donbrowski for the trip they took and the information they provided. That was an excellent presentation. Also want to thank our retirees for all the years of effort put in on your behalf to make Stanley County Schools what it is today. That is in no way a lack of your investment in time in teaching over the years in the positions that you fill, and we appreciate that very much. I appreciate also the stand that Dr. James has taken tonight. I too am getting very disturbed and concerned about the continued comments being made negatively about our school system. My opinion is, if you can't get in the ballgame to pitch for the right side, don't pitch at all. I think we've made some obvious improvements. We've obviously made progress and stand in a much better position in which we've been in a number of years, and the data proves that. It's hard to argue with data when it's presented in the right way. Obviously, data can mean anything you choose it to mean, taken out of context, but when presented in the manner in which it has, I think it's difficult to argue with. As far as the consolidation issue, again, I congratulate Dr. James on his stance and completely concur with everything that he said about it. So I too look forward to tomorrow's data that will be presented, and I think, again, it will just prove beyond all shadow of doubt that good things are happening in Stanley County Schools, and in no short part on the effort of those in the administrators' positions in the schools, the teachers, and the students themselves most of all. And we appreciate their support, and certainly, we appreciate their hard work. And also, to say one last thing about Mr. McIntyre's comments concerning the hiccups, if you will, on the first day of school. Please understand that everything takes time, and we appreciate your patience in giving us the time to work out those difficulties and those issues, and we do apologize for any inconvenience that it may have caused. Thank you.
Ms. Watson.
Ditto does work well. Everybody has said what we all agree to, that everybody, we appreciate everything that everybody does. And one thing that Dr. James said about the teacher assistants in K-three or K-two, I was there at one time, and to me, a student, if you can't teach them to read in K- at one time, and to me, a student, if you can't teach them to read in K-3, it's hard to do it after that. And if we had our teacher assistants back in our K-3, I just can't imagine. When I was there, the teacher did her thing with reading, and then I had my thing with reading. And those students had two reading groups every day. So they knew how to read when they left us. And that's one thing I think we really need to work on, is to get our teacher assistants back in those grades. And I'm totally agreeing with Mr. Chance. This thing about bad-mouthing us is not, you know, good. I'm thinking, you know, these letters in the paper, come to our schools and go to them and see what's going on. You need to be there to see what's going on. And if you're not, then take your opinion somewhere else. We need positive things in our schools, and I think we have it there. And I think we have a very, very good school system, and I would put our school system up against anybody. A lot of people are thinking, oh, well, this one's better, and that one's better, and that one's better. But you know what? We're holding our own, and we're doing good. And tomorrow, you're going to be surprised. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. I'd just like to remind everyone that we do have a district meeting coming up, and Ms. Miller, what's the date on that again?
19th.
19th. We are hosting it. And I'd like to thank Ms. Miller and any of the other staff that's working with pulling all this off and putting it together. I know it takes a lot of time beyond what you normally have to do. So, that was 19th, and I think it starts at 4 o'clock. And it's going to be at the hospital starting at? Okay. All right, so if you're able to make that, make sure Hope's got you signed up. Also, along those lines, we have a law conference coming up in August, I mean, I'm sorry, in October, boy, I'm backing up here. October, if you're interested in going to that, please make sure you touch base with Ms. Miller. And also, later in November, we have the State Association meeting, so keep those things in mind. I want to just make a little bit of comment, and sure is nice to have everybody having a come-by eye moment up here tonight. But I spent most of my weekend on Facebook, believe it or not, and I remember saying one time that that was going to be an abomination to this nation, and I'm thinking, I'm beginning to think I was a prophet in my own time there. But I think sometimes the public, and I'm not faulting the public because I know everyone's not as involved in the mechanics of what goes on with the school board and superintendent's office and what have you. But I want to give you a little primer. I tried to relay this to some people over the weekend on Facebook. The school board itself, if we can do an analogy or a comparison, the school board is somewhat like the legislative branch in Congress or the State House. We make and set policy the same way the legislature does laws. The superintendent and his staff, much like the executive branch, is tasked with carrying out the wishes of the board and enforcing the policy and making sure that it's enforced in whatever way is needed. The only time the board gets involved in things, and I think, I get a lot of emails, why isn't the board doing this? Why isn't the board doing that? You know, board members ought to do this, that, and the other. We live by a set of rules and policies too, so we can't just willy-nilly jump in and push a button and make something correct sometimes. We've got to go through a process. And I hope people understand that, that there's a process in place, and, you know, the superintendent and his staff enforces the policy, and if you don't like what happens, then you obviously have an appeal to the board, but the board doesn't get involved into it, in the process until that point. And that's just the way it works. May not be the smoothest way of doing things, but that's the way it works, and we all are bound by those rules and regulations. So it's not that the board's trying to be hard to get along with or doesn't want to be responsive to you. Sometimes, when situations occur, we as board members have to keep our mouths shut because of the role we play. So if you come up to me sometimes and try and engage me in conversation, I may not tell you what you want to know, but it's because I have a responsibility. You know, we all held our hand up and said we were going to play by the rules too, so we have to do that. So just hope that, you know, you can understand that if things don't happen just quite as quick as you think. And I just, one quick thing about the, you know, I knew that we would be under the microscope this year on the bus and situation because we were making a big change, and I knew that. But in defense of all those that worked so hard on that project, I'll say this. Every school year, the first few days, we have some glitches, and we have some things we would rather not happen. That's just, when you're dealing with a problem or issue of this size, there's just so many, you know, places for things to happen, and you're involving so many people, it takes so much coordination. And that's, you know, not offering an excuse, I'm just making it as an explanation. And no one up here wants kids any longer on the bus than they have to. I rode a bus three hours and 45 minutes a day, every day of my life, for 12 years. And I don't care to have long bus rides either, but it just so happens, if you're on the end of the route, guess what? And that's where I was at. You've got a long ride in the morning, you've got a long ride in the evening, that's the way it happens. So, but appreciate everybody, and appreciate the Transportation Department working hard on that and trying to pull all that off. And hopefully, we can keep streamlining that and improve it as it would go on. And obviously, we welcome feedback. It may not be what we want to hear sometimes, but we do welcome feedback. So with that, I think I've probably said enough. The next board meeting, and Dr. James will not be here on the second Tuesday, or first Tuesday that month, is that right? So this is for October. So we need to settle on what day you care to be. We can do that Thursday, following that Tuesday, I think, sort of what his first option was. Is that okay?
Thursday.
It'd be the first, and I would say it's the first Thursday, but I can't, I'm not looking at the calendar.
October 3rd.
October 3rd?
Yeah.
Thursday. And that will be here in these chambers here, so. Everybody, okay, Anthony's not with us, we need to let him know. All right, that wraps up that. We need to motion to go into closed session for Personnel Matters under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6, Student Matters under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1, Attorney Client Matters under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3. Move, motion by Mr. McIntyre to go into closed session under those provisions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Is there any discussion? If not, those in favor signify with a C and a I.
Aye.
All right. Take a five-minute break in route to closed session.